Okay. Okay, Brad, I think you have everything hooked up and we're at the informal part of our meeting for January 21st for the just work-study session and this is somewhat informal, but I've got copies of some of the correspondence that we've received and then some of the mail that we're going to open up later in the meeting. Let's see, Barb, I get, are there, there are, there's a few things to sign as far as.
Yeah, it's in the.
Okay. So we'll get to that. Oh, pretty much some of our discussion this morning was preparation next week, I guess, regarding our health order 11-02. Brad, did you want to? Did you have a few things on that?
Yeah, well, you've got a draft in your packet to look at over the next week and essentially it is the same order. John will be here about 10 o'clock. They're down doing vaccines in the courthouse meeting room is why we relocated up here. And that was the only place we had to do vaccines and vaccines came in yesterday, so we need to get them. So they're doing vaccines all day long down there, but he's going to come up around 10 o'clock so that we can talk about that. He can give you an update on what's going on vaccine with vaccine wise and also numbers wise. But what what I anticipate, well, what I know you're going to hear from him is the numbers continue to stay steady. Brendan told me yesterday that we're seeing around 17 to 20 positives a day. A lot of that's based on we're only able to do about 30 or 40 tests a day at the hospital. So the positive percentage rate staying about the same. So we haven't seen any decline. So they're going to recommend we continue the the health order. So what you have is a draft order that is essentially the exact same thing as what we have had. It changes the dates and times of effectiveness. It also still has the two clauses removed from it if you have rescinded. I put in there for effective timeframe from midnight tonight, which is when the current one expires until midnight on the 25th of March. Just for ease of not having to redo it in 30 days. You could certainly do it in 30 days if you would like. That's up to your prerogative. And at any time, if our numbers do drop, you can certainly take action on it at any time. It doesn't mean it has to be in effect for that total time period. So it just keeps us from having to review it every or renew it every 30 days. So I noticed on the on the news that Celine County and several counties around us have renewed theirs as well for the same exact reasons. So I wish I could say that we're seeing the numbers drop or not. Depends on who you listen to, you know, many are saying the worst is yet to come. We're optimistic that we are giving the vaccine. We're we're almost don't get through the phase one portion of today. And I hate to take all John's thunder away, but they'll get through phase one of of our county today and start into some of the phase two personnel. And that's a good thing. And John, I know I had requested 400 doses this week and we got 300. So they're very busy started yesterday and today trying to get those out. So.
I see there's a couple that are listening or have joined us online, which is our intent, but just kind of doing a sound check. Is there a way they can, any of you, either of you can indicate, can you hear us okay? Yes, no, louder? Better than last week? But anyway, we will adjust as much as we can, but we did make.
It's much better noise. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, yes, thank you. And I guess that's a reminder too for all of us that we'll need to speak up and that way everyone can hear.
I think we'll find that the microphones in this on this system are much better. So I know we have our weekly meetings in here with the school and with the cities on Friday and and just talking normally like this typically is they can hear us just fine. So. So that's kind of where we're at on that as far as continuing and what you have in your packet. You also have a letter that we received just this morning from the staff at St. Andrews Elementary School and it's a page long letter. It might be worth reading this one either. In a nutshell, it supports the masking mandate and attributes the fact that they've been able to stay in school nonstop without any, the one school in the county that hasn't had to close down for any reason. And they attribute that to the safety measures to be taken taken care of because of the masking. So.
Looking there for something. I went out yesterday. About 2,500 trail road. Talked to Alice, I believe. He was under the impression that you're going to put some riprap around it, that they've done right, or do you know?
Oh, oh, oh.
At 2,512.
Yeah, he's not married. He probably talked to Mary.
I think we called her out last night.
Mary Fugliard's her name. I guess she if she answered Alice, I guess we can use that. But yeah, there. I know that I saw yesterday the tube was headed out there. No, no, they worked on it Friday.
Yeah, they're saying they were.
And yeah, Martin's attentive to riprap all the way around that and then gravel the road into the house.
Gravel.
Okay, good.
How are we going to, just looking at the, I know it came out and I didn't want to get out with him there. Like I said, I pulled up, talked to her a little bit. Appreciate it. How are we going to, the way that river runs or how are we going to pull that riprap place? You going to grout it in?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'd have to talk to Martin.
Yeah, like I said.
And just the size of the riprap, but.
Riprap don't make any difference.
You just can't, yeah, you just can't dump it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't talked to Martin about that and he's been busy all week. I mean, I've talked to him a couple of times. It's been about, I think so.
Yeah.
I could check with him and see. So.
And I did, she did mention a couple of stumps there and I said that they, the trees been cut down there on the eddy. That's the responsibility that you're getting pushed out of them. I think now they look back and saw one south side of the road and stuff. And I didn't say go back to her, but that's, you know, that's not our responsibility unless we're out there and.
If there's stuffs on the south side, they may want to leave them for the root base to maintain some.
Well, the big thing is right in the next to the road. It was there was one that she said that they cut down the trees and stuff so they can get in and out. Okay.
Yeah, I'll have to check with Martin and see. So but I do know their plan on putting riprap in there built up around it. So. I seems to me like at one point, and it's been going on way too long, but he had mentioned that they were going to drive some drivesheeting out towards the end.
Yeah.
Keep it up to hold it in place and rip it behind it. But don't hold me to that.
Well, the way the river coming around there, if you don't do something like that.
You're going to lose it, you know. Which I think is a lot of the problem they've had. So.
Now, the, back on the health order. Or are any of the other counties doing any modification as far as, as you've heard, as far as, the only issue I ever hear come up is the quarantine issue. Well, I mean, I shouldn't say that because there's some that don't care for any part of the health order. But and I know like last week, they had the KU game get canceled, you know, so that was a university decision, basketball game canceled. And we just had a situation where Abilene is, you know, dropping out of the SIT tournament.
Uh huh.
So.
Yeah, that's not covered in your health order. That's not something you chose to do. Dr. Holmes has been working with the school districts and following KDHT guidance on those matters. I know the issue that occurred this week with the Abilene basketball team. They called and consulted with the state on that as well.
I wondered if KESHA was involved or.
Well, they.
High School Association.
They, they with all due respect, KESHA is not going to give a doctor's health advice. I do know they went in. I guess, I don't know what advice they had, but I noticed yesterday that they were kind of split, but they had a majority to up to number to four of people that participate in the in the home events. Now, having said that, that still their word doesn't trump the local health officers in the counties. So if the local health officers say, I still only want you to have one person, that's the way it'll be. And I assume that's the way their order read. But.
And that's varied across the state.
It varies across the state. And I noticed that the vote for vacation vote was what 50 to 27 or something. So it wasn't wasn't unanimous by any means. So there's feelings on both sides. And I'm sure if I was a parent, I'd have some feelings too. It would be tough. I mean, we typically, my wife and I typically go to those ballgames and we're watching them online like everybody else. We did go to ballgame Friday night because my son was coaching and we were his plus one and two. And there weren't enough people there to matter in Solomon home games. So we utilized his plus one with mom and dad was a board member that decided to stop in the ten. So we got to watch a little bit of the ballgame, but it had there been people there that needed to watch it for their parents, we certainly wouldn't have taken up that space. But at any rate, it's it's tough. It's that puts them in a tough situation. The kids want their parents to be there and see them and and.
And I know when the parents go to out of town games, they check at the various locations because it's.
There's some, there's some schools that don't let any visiting parents in. They're giving priority to their their own school parents. And there's some that allow the visiting parents to have one in same way. That's the way we were Friday. It was a Harrington-Solomon game and we were, my son was the visiting team. So but at any rate, that's not addressed in here. That's addressed, that's something that Dr. Holmes has been working with on the quarantine with the schools. And we would like to say that that has changed because the numbers have lightened. So far it hasn't. So.
So you're still, what, on a weekly basis? You and John Holdgren typically and Dr. Holmes and all the superintendents of schools.
Yes, on the Wednesday afternoon.
Updates.
We had a, we had a meeting yesterday and we meet with typically it's four schools. Vote is not on every week. Part of the reason for them is they're they're split between Morse and Dickinson counties. So a lot of their advice they've been taking from the Morse County side. But we meet with them on a Wednesday, on Wednesdays and go over the previous week's activities and the numbers. And just to kind of keep a thumb on the way things are going and keep on the pulse of that. I do know that the school nurses are also talking to John and Dr. Holmes at intervals in between that as things arise. And because there's different circumstances that come up that are unique that don't fit the boilerplate advice that they've given. So we've been pretty fortunate up till this week, but then we had another, my understanding is another team's basketball player that exposed the Abilene kids and and which means that those kids that were enrolled had to quarantine. So which, like you said, cost them participating in the SLI tournament this weekend. So.
Now, the other thing on this that'll, and this isn't part of the order, but you're going to want to do it now or go into some of your report as far as some of the vaccination plans on the county, but I kind of the rumor thing, but still trying to, you know, keep everything contained and getting factual information out. A few people have said, now, is this going to be mandatory? And, you know, my understanding is there's been some health people and other people in phase one that could take the vaccine and they said, no, I'm not going to take it. And that's their choice. And so I mean, the only thing I have noticed in the news and probably some of you had is like some of the airlines and some vacation destination places may put requirements in it that you have to have the vaccination. But I mean, it's, it's a, it's a choice.
It is a choice. It's strictly voluntary. There's no mandatory about it. Although we did at a webinar we had last week, the legal, the legal people from our the law firm, the rippers that we get advice from for the county, from our insurance company did say the federal government is has indicated that as an employer, you can mandate your staff have to take it if you so choose. I haven't heard of anyone doing that other than possibly a hospital or healthcare provider. And I don't know that for a fact, but as far as the government's concerned, it's strictly voluntary. The numbers that we're seeing across the county so far for the people that we've been getting numbers for the vaccine, to provide the vaccine as well as the school districts and the numbers they have given us. We're seeing about a 50 50 split. 50% say that they'll take it and 50% aren't interested in taking it. So you know, you couple that with the people that have already had it. If you figured 25% of the populace has already had it and build up their immunities to it. As John said, that gets you up to the 75% mark. And once everybody's had it that you're approaching that herd immunity number of 80%. So which is where we want to be. Back to the the question of, you know, how we're moving forward. We had just yesterday afternoon identified the location where we're going to hold the vaccine clinics in the north end of the county. And that's going to be the old Green Ford car dealership. Tim Holmes graciously provided that to us. It has the space inside because it's all open now. And the parking space outside to get that done. And so we originally tried to get Eisenhower Center to utilize the visitor center meeting room stuff. And it's locked down and would take an act of Congress literally to get that opened up to use. And so and by sheer accident at a meeting that I was attending up there yesterday on the Realester Trail. We, that popped up and and John called and talked to to Tim and Tim says absolutely whatever you need, use it, use it as much as you want. So we very much appreciate that. So the plan is to utilize that facility. We have a website that we have created that's in testing right now. Hopefully by the end of this week, tomorrow it'll be public that anyone with a computer or smartphone can just go to that website. Pick out the date and time that that is available on there that you want, punch in your name and stuff and it will reserve that spot and tell you where to come. And then it will send you a reminder. For the people that don't have web access or don't have a phone, you'll be able to call up the health department and the gals here will do it for you. So there was talk yesterday in our meeting after the, after we got done with the schools, John and Brendan and Brian and I talked about that particular process. Dr. Holmes is of the opinion he would like to see us prioritize the highest risk group, which is the elderly. And maybe start with people that are 80 and above. Get them done and then go back and do 65 to 79. And then then open it up more for other people in the public because the absolute one risk criteria, the highest risk people for the coronavirus is the elderly. So get them done. I do know that of the 300 vaccines that we currently have, they're doing something they've done. I think they're going to finish up all the public entity people today, firefighters and some of the sheriff's deputies, police officers. And then they've got enough, they're going to be hitting Brown's Home and some of those elderly congregate settings where Brown's Home is kind of unique in the fact that not only do you have seniors that live there, but they all eat together three times a day.
Oh, yeah.
Those proximity. So that makes them an even higher risk. And so those areas where they're congregate in nature, they want to get those done and and like John said several times yesterday, we want to take a piece of that pie out as much as we can pretty regularly. And every every chunk we take out, certainly more people that are done. And so they've been real good about getting the number of vaccines done and provided to people that we've received. Now, this 300 is the biggest number we've received so far.
So Brad, what's the cost of that?
Yeah, we, there's no cost. The federal government provides the vaccines to the state who provides it to us. We are not charging a fee to do it. So if you go to Auburn or to Case Pharmacy or one of the pharmacies, you may have, there's no fee for the vaccine, but they may elect to charge you an administrative fee to do that. I don't know. That's up to them. But we're not charging for it on. So we want to get it out. The goal is to get it in people's arms as much as we can. And so that's kind of where we're at. So.
Question there, Brad. I know you said you were asking for 400. You only got 300 when you go with this dashboard, whatever you're setting up with the you know, call-in stuff. How do we know that we're going to be able to have the vaccines available?
That is the $64 question. They told John yesterday or earlier this week that the plan moving forward so that counties can know just exactly that will be that we, they will notify us a week in advance. Now, it remains to be seen how accurate that will be. The vaccine that we got yesterday didn't come through the state. It came directly out of Kentucky and was shipped directly to us. And so there are ways that the state can we're kind of learning as we go. In the past, we'd requested smaller numbers. John requested numbers and he learned from another county that you want to stay on the hundred, rounded off to hundreds. And if you do hundreds, like 100, 200, 300, 500, instead of doing 75 or 150, they don't have to break those cases up and it'll come directly from one of the warp speed ports as opposed to coming through the state where they got to take 50 or 25 out and then send them to the county. So we're kind of learning the ropes as we go. Nobody tells you that upfront. And so but if they won't accurately tell us a week in advance, that should allow us to set up and and do the numbers. We'll also try to keep a list of what I want to call them overflow. Because if you, if we've got 400 scheduled to go to Green Ford and do their shots next week, we know that a certain percentage of those, we will find out that percentage aren't going to show up.
Right.
And so once you open that vial, you've only got so many hours to utilize it. And so we want some people we can call to say, you know, could you be here in two hours?
Got a backup plan.
Backup plan. So there's a lot of moving parts on this thing to. And if it's, if it's Pfizer, you know, you've only, once we receive it, we've only got five days to do it or export. If it's Moderna, we've got 30 days. We can keep it in the freezers. And but once you open that vial up and mix it, you've only got like six hours to utilize it. So.
Now, was this from Moderna, this last one?
This is what we got. Yes. So it gives us a little more flexibility. Although we currently have plenty of names still. Yeah. To get it in people's arms. So.
Of course, you also have to coordinate. Once you get that to make sure you've got the follow-up second vaccine.
Yeah. And that, we also have the follow-up from the first batch that they start doing tomorrow. We're already ready to do that three-week batch for the very first round that did it. So the health department is extremely busy right now. Trying to keep up with all that stuff. We do have a couple of part-time nurses that are helping to do phone calls and do that coordination. And so we will be looking for a few volunteers. I know Chance has put the word out to his cert group and his volunteers to, if nothing else, help coordinate the vaccine clinics or come in and help us answer phones and stuff and help the public to do their login and things like that. So we're trying to streamline it to where it's as easy and simple because I, you know, we believe in the KISS theory, keep it simple. And so we know we've got a lot of seniors out there and they're the high-risk group. They need it. Some of them may not have access to computers. So we'll, we'll acquiesce to make sure that we make it available to them. So we can get them registered and get them, get them in, get them done. Many of them like Village Manor and some of the others, hospital go to them and do them already. So we don't have to worry about them. So I think the hospital's doing frontier estates and some of those establishments as well.
Estero Hall coming?
Estero Hall's coming very well, actually. I was out there yesterday afternoon. On the, on the addition, they were putting, they've got the walls up inside and we're putting up the center wall around the shower stalls and the plumbing and stuff. I would guess probably by the rate they were going by this afternoon, the walls on the inside will be up. And and they're blocked. Their masons are putting them up, moving a lot faster than the jail project is. But yeah, they've got them up. The plumbing was all in place, stubbing it out through the blocks and looking really good. So the exterior is all done. The structure is all done. And so it'll just be a matter of getting the plumbing done and the fixtures and stuff in. I anticipate that by the time we get ready for district court to be out there, that that portion will be done and usable. So on the inside, Tom had our our sheet rockers out there and they were putting up temporary walls along with that portable wall or what have you we've got. Yeah. And so that I looked on the cameras last night before I left the office out there, security cameras, and they had the sheet rock up on them. And so I think starting the first of the week, Sherry will be able to get out there with her staff and start getting cables. Seth can start getting electricity laid temporary electricity outlets laid on the floor and they can start setting up tables and kind of getting things laid out the way they want them. So things are coming together. Much quicker than I had and easier than I anticipated it would. So and we're still looking at the first couple of days of February for them to shut down and move. Cindy has got a moving company that she's contracted with that will come in and they'll bring it semi and actually like load it up and move things out there for them. Put some of them in storage. We'll have a couple of storage containers for it utilized out there as well. So then as soon as we get them moved, well, it'll be time for us to move into the civic center. So.
Do you want to cover briefly, just to add on to our agenda, that property tax relief?
I can, yeah.
What that involves and.
You know, if you remember back at 16, we had the tornado, the one across the county and and just prior to that, the legislature had passed a a bill that ended up being statute number 79 to 1613, which has been come to be known as real property relief. And what it does, that gives the authority of U.S. County Commissioners to, upon application, provide property tax relief to the owner of a property that was damaged substantially due to either natural disaster or something of that nature, a fire or something. And so in this particular, back then, we did, I think about 15 to 18 properties across the county where houses were totally destroyed. And and put yourself in their position here. We've got, see, had several people that had really nice brand-new homes that were completely, I mean, totally destroyed. And I'll use Ken Woods, for example, Chapman completely lost his house. Fortunately, his wife was in the basement, wasn't, wasn't injured. But, you know, they paid your taxes on the house for the whole year and they lost it May 16th or whatever the date was. And so this allowed us to not only help them out by returning their taxes for the year that they had paid, but it prevented them from paying taxes on something that was no longer there. So so what the typical process is you make an application. We have the form. You have to provide proof that there was damage and what the damage was and what caused it. In this case, Wendy Burt has made application on a home that she owns at 905 North Mulberry in Abilene. It suffered a a fire that occurred. Oh, well, I'll tell you the date in just a minute. That substantially damaged the home. I believe it was in 2018. December 9th of 2018, that the house was substantially damaged. So this, her application is requesting relief from the 2019 property taxes. And so she does fit that criteria. I don't know what those taxes were, but certainly she would be eligible for that. So but the statute gives you the authority to in this case, return those property taxes, not only for us, but also for the school district and the city of Abilene. And the intent obviously is to, the purpose behind it is so that they have some assistance to help rebuild and be what they can. So.
Janelle, how much time do you need for your report?
I can be as brief as you'd like.
How much time do we need for John? Do you have a?
Same one.
Well, I mean, not I mean, not super brief, but but yes, maybe. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, starting the budget process, thinking about that, an tentative timeline that's working on. Of course, there is a bill in the Senate that we need to be aware of that last year they had taken up or one of the senators had. last year they had taken up, uh, or one of the senators had proposed that we repeal the tax levy, but we notify every taxpayer if we seek to increase the tax dollars that we are requesting. So when we're starting our budget process, the way that the bills that they're proposing that that will be discussed is we cannot increase the tax levy dollars higher than what we have for the current year. So that's, uh, something that's going to be discussed in the House next week. The Senate approved it thirty-four to one in their taxation committee. So part of that also, the court will have additional responsibilities that she'll have to notify every taxpayer in the county if there's any increase. And it's for any taxing entity that wants to do that, we'll send out a notice for that. So it's going to create some additional, some additional work there, to say the least, in dollars. Of course, if, say, that one of the cities wants to increase it, then they would pay for the the information that's put out on it. So we're going to watch that.
So if if a municipality increases their budget or mill, if this would pass, I think Senator Tyson is the one who who started it and worked on it last year. So if a city would increase or a school board or?
Schools are exempt.
Schools are exempt. Okay. So if the city would increase, then they notify us and then Barb would have to facilitate sending a notice
To every taxpayer.
To every taxpayer just to make them aware that that there could be an increase in the budget, even before it's approved?
Even before it's approved. And there's a lot of information within that notice that has to go out as to what the tax dollar increase is, what the assessed valuation is, what the dollar is that will be increasing on their taxes. This is their notice of a public hearing. And then they we would follow the same procedure that we currently do. It's published in the newspaper ten days prior. Then taxpayers come in and speak to the commission as as normal, if they have any concerns. And then the budget is either approved or not approved. So. And this would be from watersheds, fire districts, cemetery districts, cities, townships, all of that.
Oh, Barb, how much? Any idea how much, uh, dollars it would take to notify all the taxpayers in Dickinson County? If it was a countywide initiative, I?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Because the mailings, like when you've sent out other information, I guess it'd be similar to when we send out property tax notifications or?
So that's easily.
So it'd be a mailing to everyone, every household.
Right.
And then i- if if there's two people in the same household, do you, would we send a mailing out to each person?
And beyond the property taxes listed, we could use the, uh, the mailings that we do already. So I think we'd be okay. It but a notice for every single property, though. So that's where.
If you have five properties, you just get one notice?
One notice, but probably five different. Yeah. Yeah, so.
But then, you know, how do we? I I already said townships. I mean, so if it's one of the townships goes by that, we'd have to mail just those people in that township, the property owner of the township.
Yes, that's that's my understanding, yes. So they'll have more information coming out of this, but.
After they pass it.
After they pass it, yes, which.
Well, I know the concern was that, you know, some people, you'd say the mill levy stayed the same and yet what they paid for property tax was slightly higher than the year before. And so that concerned people. But, you know, before, we did publish a budget, just like everybody else did. And then there's a a hearing. And so it's it's adding an extra step. So it's, um, but 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 that's.
Exactly.
You have to put, I guess you'd have to put that into your cost of your budget if you had to do a mailing or one or two.
Oh, it's murder attempt, please.
Exactly.
I mean, it's kind of a.
It's it's not a savings is what they were hoping it to be. And also, some, there's different responsibilities that the appraiser has to look at when they're doing their their appraisal as well. And they can't increase the valuation of property solely as a result of normal repair, replacement, or maintenance of existing structures or equipment. So you know, when you make an improvement to your home, you would expect that your taxes would go up. So.
Depending on the improvement, true.
Yes, yes. So that's one thing that they're looking at. So as we're starting our budget process, that's something that's going to be in the back of our minds as as we do this. So.
Can that, have they specified what the mailing needs to be? Could it be on a postcard that notifies you?
I don't think so. Just looking at this, it it has to require one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different things. Yeah, so it's, uh, now it could be electronic, as long as we have an agreement with the taxpayer that they can receive notices electronically. But.
Well, that'd be a moving target with sixteen thousand parcels across the county.
Exactly. So.
And the way the way people change email addresses and things. Well.
Well, even addresses.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Well, and I think the frustrating part is that, hey, you see in the league, we're working on amending or trying to put together a bill that would appease what the senators are hearing. And the it was just kind of pushed aside, unfortunately. So that's that's a little bit frustrating for them.
Well, I think it's one of those where it sounds good. And and really, it it does have benefits to it, but the unintended consequence is all of a sudden you have more mailings that have to go out. And, um, that's that's going to offset and.
The timelines too. The timelines, that's right, too, because it's, you know, normally the budgets have to be approved and submitted to the county court by August twenty-fifth. Now we have till September tenth. So that delays when Barb is able and her staff is are able to get the assessments completed and then certify to the state. The other piece of this is if we are going to, everything's got to be submitted to the Department of Revenue to be approved before the the court gets the assessed valuation. It has to be sent to the Department of Revenue to approve before they bar comes anything out to the cities and the counties and the school districts and all around to see what their levy is. So there's an additional step there. So the timeline is going to be linked that way as well. Just more more things to to track and manage as as we're going through this. So. The other thing that we're working on, obviously, is the audit. And I spoke with our audit firm. They were supposed to be here in two weeks. I don't know if they'll be onsite. We'll we'll do as much electronically as we can and they may have to pop in for a day, but with relocating and that, it's going to make it a little bit more difficult. So we'll do that.
Okay.
So is there anything that you want to focus on for the upcoming budget? Yes.
I called you know, yesterday, after information about the pipeline. And, you know, I was thinking about that before I called you, you know, the only way we'd be able to know is what it would have generated last year through the.
Right.
And then that's basically Kansas, the state of Kansas firms the value, the value of that product.
Right.
So it's the only way we'd have an idea of how much we might be getting in revenue, correct?
Correct. And Bruce was going to reach out to PDD, but they're working remotely. So it's going to probably be a little bit before we get that information. So as soon as I have something on that, I ask him to email me in case it came in this morning, but.
They should have been required all along to do their self-assessment. And 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 then the the state waives their 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 taxes.
Right.
So there ought to be some numbers somewhere now. With that said, as you probably heard, our new president pulled the Keystone Pipeline's permit last night. So I don't know what the hell that will affect the quantity of material going through the pipeline moving forward. My understanding is you've got the original pipeline that comes down from Calgary that hits Steel City and then comes across Kansas to Cushing. That would still be in place, but now the new one coming from the Dakotas across, or however, the one that that, uh, President Trump had given the permit to a couple of years ago is the one that he's put the shutdown on. So I don't know if that will affect the material coming through or not. So it seems like we just get to the end of the ballgame and get ready to get something out of that and something throws a wrench into things. So.
Well, it could increase the flow of the through the one that's there. I mean, I put it the other way.
Yeah.
Last half or half empty.
Yeah.
One of the new pipelines through Kansas, they would tie it to that.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But it was going to double the flow of materials through the pipeline. And so, uh, which in in essence should mathematically double the the amount of tax revenue, property tax that comes in each one of those six counties across the state. So I guess if we just get what was based on the original flow, we'd we'd be happy with a with a small cut, Paul.
My concern is too, though, is is, you know, say it's it's going to be eight hundred thousand dollars that we would have gotten. I wouldn't, you know, that looking at what the past profit, profit came through. I would want to, you know, budget for that much money. I mean, we'd want to, you know, sixty percent, seventy percent, because you can always get more and carry it over.
Exactly. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, and assume that some of their rugs will be pulled out from underneath you every year.
Right.
Playing on the worst-case scenario, I hope for the best.
Exactly. And we're not going to have a good idea with that since they just went on the tax rolls this year. So we won't start receiving any monies until next year. So it's going to be another year, at least, before we have a a little bit of a handle on that. So.
Well, in the Senate Bill thirteen, I I don't want to, well, I guess I'm going to criticize the legislature. How much money we've lost by not having that to learn tax returned to the county?
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah.
You know, I know you probably know what it is, but that's, you know, in the millions.
It it absolutely over the years.
So we wouldn't be fought fighting this property tax. If we had that many amendments to the counties.
Right. Had they done their job and followed the law, then we'd be okay. But.
Well, and I hate to even bring it up, but when you talk about the pipeline, if that source of revenue is there and it's a good name, appears it's going to be a source of revenue, you know, there's always a chance that there would be legislation introduced, the state would peel that off. They wouldn't come to us in the future. Hate to say that, but, you know, desperation calls for desperate measures and and, uh, if if their revenues are down and they need the extra money, they're going to go out wherever they can and find it. So.
Probably so.
Be another hand on the road just trying to pull it out from underneath us. So.
So there's a lot of different things that we'll be watching and and as we start preparing. So we'll start in March and still planning on having uh, meetings with outside organizations in the commission, starting in May, early in the latter half of May. But we'll, uh, unfortunately extend our timeline a little bit. If this bill passes, that we'll be, that we'll be doing this before we can certify that the county clerk. So.
The outside agencies, Janelle, uh, full conservation, for example. Uh, you know, we've always given thirty thousand. I've been on the board, but since I didn't spend that money, this I don't, I wouldn't have thought they'd been able to spend it. For some of the, you know, they may not need thirty thousand.
That is a possibility.
And I'm just.
And I can, in the letter that I sent out, I can drop language, you know, asking them to.
Well, it's it's the community, it's a, it's a corporation. We've given them six thousand for outside events. They didn't have any events last year that I know of. I'm the most young, you know, like the well, lens on the Texas mental health. They'll probably want more just because of the need is there. That, I mean, there are other agencies that are going to have more needs due to the pandemic. But.
Exactly.
Totally lost that a little bit.
And unfortunately, I'm anticipating our expenses to go up. Like fuel will go up, utilities will go up, food will go up. So I I think we're going to see that across the board that that we need to factor into our budgets. So it's it's something we have to keep in mind.
Well, and I know we've said it before and and need to remind everyone, um, a- and I know our department heads and elected officials, I mean, they're all taxpayers also.
Right.
But, you know, they, any way they can find to hold the line and factor that in. You know, if there's publications they get that they don't utilize, you know, maybe as commissioners, before we've attended some state meetings, which we routinely did, and and now the trend is that it's virtual and remote. So, you know, any areas that we can, you know, cut it back to. And then having said that, I I know what happens and it's kind of become one of my stories that I go to is when I had someone tell me that, you know, our taxes are going up too much and they remember when they first built their house, it only cost this. And when they first got their farmland, it only cost this. And they could show me records and everything has gone up, gone up, gone up over the years. And you need to hold the line on taxes. And then they said, by the way, I need more gravel on my road and I need, you know, and all of a sudden, it's like, okay. And and then I knew there'd been a fire out there where Grant Township had responded, never reached their place, but it protected their place. And I think they'd come over from Salina, uh, you know, kind of the same thing. And so, you know, there were extra services and they want more gravel. And and, you know, all of that's good, but it's it's kind of like spend less money and give us more in services. And, you know, those things are incongruous. And, um, but but but, you know, having said that, if there's any, you know, certainly encourage everyone to hold the line the best they can, because it's it, a lot of people are struggling out there and and we want to be responsible.
Absolutely.
And I think we have. I mean, I think when you look at we've expanded services and done quite a few things and, um, over the years.
Speaking of the the virtual deals, okay, see new, I I predict, I was able to watch it my time. I've watched three of the four so far. It's not like being there, but, you know, it's.
Next Thursday, yeah.
Next Thursday? Yeah, well, I think they're doing a good job.
I think we'll see more of that, you know, throughout this year.
In the future.
Before we get to, oh, no, I'm just. No, I was, uh, I wasn't able to go to the North Central Regional Plant Information meeting. I broke water line and Janelle sat in for me. And I was a little disappointed that she wasn't able to sit down on the executive session with the money that the North Central Regional Health, no, or Central Kansas Plant Information, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Uh, they gave bonuses out, if I'm correct. And I I told Janelle I'd call her and said, you know, I'm not going to be able, I'm, you know, you can voice your concern that I'm not in favor of it. They wouldn't let her on the call.
I I don't know of Ellen as the president was maybe she didn't realize that I'm your proxy or what, but yeah, I they took the staff out and Emily had taken me out of that as well. So.
Great. Nobody can't be involved with that.
Well, well, right. So I'm, you know, the next meeting we have will be next Thursday. So I'm going to in the meeting make comment about that. That, you know, if I can't attend, you know, even remotely, that, you know, our proxy should be able to be in executive session, discuss those issues. And and the meeting, it was, I'm going to go back to what we had to comment about before, that extra pay. It shouldn't have been, you know, you're doing your job. Shouldn't have been extra pay, in my opinion.
They used CARES money to pay for that, for the bonuses.
So that'll be, will be next meeting, we'll do next after that, in the first couple of years. And report to you on my comments to Emily. That's all I have, Lynn.
Okay. John? Give us an update.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for relocating up here today so we could use the meeting room. COVID vaccine, I was busy doing that this morning. I'll be there all day today. I think Brad, Brad, I think you speak up a bit about next week is the, uh, the time that the mask mandate will come up again for, I don't know. And a little about my feelings with it, where we're at with it, as a community, where we're at with the state. The plus side to it is, is the numbers are down a little bit in the state and they're down a little bit local, which is good. We did not see any locally nor within the state, the the bump after the holiday that, uh, everybody was predicting. However, the virus is still there and we are still, uh, dealing with it. You know, we get cases every day. Uh, we get ambulance transports every day for for, uh, people that have COVID. So it's still out there. It's still, uh, you know, making a lot of people sick and some really sick. Unfortunately, even we've had, uh, quite a few deaths in the last month. Although, uh, unfortunately, we got into.
Unfortunately, even we've had, uh, quite a few deaths in the last month, although, uh, unfortunately got into a couple of our nursing homes and. And it's pretty devastating in those cases, so it, uh, it's still out there. As far as masks go, uh, you know, mask is one of those things that, and I'll start off by saying that. I wanna get out of a mask as soon as I can, as soon as anybody does, and, uh. But knowing what we know right now, uh. You know, we need to protect others and that's, that's the reason we wear masks. Uh, I, I think there's been some confusion about, you know, that, that some people aren't afraid of, of getting it, so they don't wear it. Actually, it's to protect other people from you expelling it, that's how the masks work. Uh, I think someone at one of your meetings made the comment of the size of the virus particle. A hundred nanometers, so that's, that's really small. A sheet of paper is a hundred thousand nanometers thick. So if that gives you some reference how small it is, it's small. But it doesn't, and at that size, yeah, it would permeate any base covering. But it doesn't go alone. It follows moisture, it gives a ride on moisture, we're breathing out, you've got humidity in, in here, so it, and it comes out if you cough and, and speed up more. So it, it's on moisture, it, it doesn't transmit just the tiny little particle itself, it's hung to moisture. So as we breathe out, we're breathing it out, attached to moisture, feel it on our mask when we breathe out. So it's much larger than masks do prevent some, now, I'm gonna be the first to say. Uh, I've never said that masks are a hundred percent effective, cause they're not. There are some that are more protective, certainly the N ninety-five mask are, are heavier protection. And then you get into the, to the, uh, surgical mask like we wear, uh, and then you get into various cloth masks and et cetera. Uh, and the effectiveness really depends on what they're made out of. Um, you know, and how people use them, how they wear them, you know, they're not effective at all if you wear them around your chin. Uh, but the, uh, surgical masks are probably, probably a little better than the, the cloth mask. Again, that depends on what type of cloth it's made out of, how, how porous that cloth is, uh, for, for transmission of a, of a virus. Uh, and a lot of people don't change out these masks, the difference with the, these masks, they're paper masks, they're made out of paper fibers. So they deteriorate pretty rapidly and, and a, and a surgical mask like this. A day tops and it ought to be changed out, really probably after five hours, it's thrown away. Because the moisture degrades it and, uh, just like paper getting wet. The, uh, the cloth masks that you wear, uh, you know, not everybody cleans them like they should, they should be cleaned or washed at least daily. Or more often if they get dirty. So, uh, when that happens, then they, it degrades them somewhat as well, but what masks are doing is simply. A third of the spoke as far as reducing transmission. Along that, with that, do social distancing and washing your hands. So it's, those are the three things that we can do and it's not just one, it's all three together will reduce the amount of, uh. Of, of virus that's spread. It won't stop at a hundred percent. The only thing that's gonna stop this virus is what we're doing today and will be doing over the next several months, and that's vaccine through the community. So that, that's kind of where with the mask, I think that there's a lot of counties that have gone ahead and extended a, a mask order through June or went six months out. You know, and we've talked some about that, I think, at a month or two months at a time, because we don't wanna make it any longer than we have to. However, it's gonna be probably June until we get everybody vaccinated, a lot of that is dependent upon, uh. How we get the vaccine, how much vaccine we get, and we don't totally have control of that. We're giving every, giving everything we get. We got, uh, seventy doses last week, which were second doses for seventy people that we gave, uh, vaccine to a month ago. And we're currently giving that, and we got three hundred new vaccines, uh, yesterday, and we're in the process of giving yet as well. And we will probably have all of those given, or should have all of those given by Tuesday of next week. And hopefully we'll get another shipment next week. Uh, we have not received, uh, notice of, of how much or if we're going to get any next week. But, uh, we did make an agreement yesterday, uh, to use the, uh, the old, uh, green team building to, to set up. And Tim Hall was gracious enough to let us use the prop part of that building for vaccine. For the next several months, so that's gonna be a nice large space where we can, uh, run lots of people through when we do the mass vaccination, so that's, that's great. And we will be setting that up next week and, and, uh, when we get to that point, we'll advertise and get it out there. Now, we're still on phase one today, Thursday, yesterday, the governor announced the effect of today, we could move into phase two. Once we get phase one done, we're pretty close to getting phase one done, we will move into phase two and the phase two involves. Uh, high risk, high contact people, uh. People sixty-five and older, it includes fire departments, police departments, dispatchers that weren't included in phase one. So we will get into phase two with these three hundred vaccines. And, uh, so we're, we're hard at work getting them out, but as far as masks go, you know, it's, it's, I think it's still important, yes, the, the. Federal government says, and this is because the studies, uh, that they did to help get a vaccine out, they did not study. Uh, because of the effort to get it out more quickly, if. You could, once you're vaccinated, if you could get the virus, now, what the vaccine does is it prevents you from getting sick if you're exposed to it. What they don't know yet is if you're exposed to it and you carry those virus particles in your airway, it's not making you sick. But you can breathe it out or cough it out or spit it out. Somebody else, that's why they're recommending the mask yet, even after you have the vaccine. The study is still underway, it looks like, but there's probably not gonna be enough particles that you would make somebody else sick. And they make that determination, then they will probably do it with the mask for you once you have the vaccine. But right now, they, they're still in the study, so.
Hmm.
Uh, that's why they're going, or are still requiring a mask after you've had the vaccine, so. So I would say that in the next month or two, we will know that, so they will know that. So that's kind of where we are until that time, I, I think that we probably, my recommendation would be that we, we continue on with it. My fear is, is, you know, going away from the protection we have, again, we're starting the vaccine. Uh, you know, I think we probably got, uh. You know, maybe a thousand people vaccinated, if we count all the nursing homes that are vaccinated, hospital, healthcare workers. Uh, we're probably about there, but, uh. Uh, we are, we are, uh, going to get into the schools, they're a part of phase two, we're gonna get into the schools just as quick as we can. I don't know whether we'll get there with this, this amount of, of vaccine, but we will probably get there with the next amount of vaccine, at least some of the schools in the county. They have their numbers, uh, it's a little disheartening when we got our numbers and found out that. All the schools, it's only about fifty percent of the people agree to, to take the vaccine. Because of, I think there's some apprehension out there yet, so, uh. That's what's gonna get us to the herd immunity is people getting the vaccine, so, uh, we can move forward, so. That's where we are with it, that's where I am with it, uh. So I, unfortunately, I think it's something that we probably need to retain, uh, for a while yet. Uh, because we're not totally out of the woods yet, but also, uh, as soon as we can, I'm all for it, just as much as anybody else is.
Now, when you speak of the schools, you're speaking teachers and staff and support, and as far as students.
The, the.
That's the difference.
It is a little bit.
Classification or area.
Pfizer vaccine, you can vaccinate kids down to sixteen with Pfizer, Moderna is eighteen and older. Uh, there's some talk, maybe long out in the process, or maybe a vaccine approved for, for school-aged children. But at this point, it would be adults only, so it'd be teachers, school bus drivers, folks, all of those people. We would do it at the schools. So that's kind of where we're at, you know, we're, we're kind of, we have to follow the guidelines, the phases that they want us to go through, but we're, uh. Uh, we're prioritizing throughout that phase and trying to get, uh, get the critical areas first, critical people first. So, uh, that's what we're hearing on, so.
Now, it's the first shot and the second shot, basically the same formula, so.
Exactly.
So if someone doesn't show up for a second shot. You can't locate them, that doesn't necessarily go to waste or not used, you can.
If they would not show up.
Find someone for a first shot.
They would not show up, we'll find somebody pretty fast.
Okay.
Uh, we're going to, Monday, we're going to Harrington and doing, uh, some of the city people in Harrington, the fire department in Harrington, we can spend. Later in the evening, cause the fire might work outside of town, we're gonna have to catch them. Uh, the worry is with that, our, our vaccine comes in ten, ten, uh, doses per vial. And we only have six hours, and once you take the first dose out, you have six hours to, to give the rest of the doses out of that vial, or you have to throw it away. We don't ever wanna do that. So Monday night in Harrington, and we have, we finish everybody that we think we need to finish, and we have four doses left in the vial. We will find four people in Harrington to give that to before we leave. Because in the evening, it would be tough to find anybody.
But they're in their little spot.
It wouldn't be good by morning, so we will find somebody, uh, that, that wants it, whether we go by the hilltop or wherever. We will, uh, or we're gonna waste it.
Hmm.
But you're right, if somebody does miss their second dose, uh, they can take it again. Uh, there's a four-day allowance on your second dose, you can either go four days ahead of your due date or four days after. That's still be good, you can still take it if you really mess up and you're a month later, it doesn't start over, though, that, that, that doesn't become your first shot, you then have to have another one. Uh, you know, isn't gonna be as good if you wait that long, I don't know. Uh, you know, in the UK, they started to make a vaccine go further, they've started, uh, stretching out the second dose. So four or six months after the other, so more people would at least get the first dose. Uh, but the United States has not done that, they're not recommending that, so. Um.
And obviously, you wanna make your second appointment and get a second dose.
You do, and we're working on a, on a program, on a website that they could get on, and it will send them out a reminder a couple of days before their second dose and say, hey. Need to get a hold of us for your second dose. And, uh, and that will be good when we get to that point, but, uh. It's a, it's a, it's a busy time, and we, you know, we talked about. You know, if, if we do fifty percent, you know, and that's kind of where we may do fifty percent, I think our county is thirteen thousand, sure, under fifteen thousand. People, if we take the students out of it, if we take those sixteen or eighteen and younger out. Um, and then at that, if we only do fifty percent, uh, that, that choose to get the vaccine, then we're seven or eight thousand, uh, people. Uh, and we're gonna be set up, if we get the vaccine, we'll be set up and do that many between now and June, I hope the first to do it, so. We have the people, we've got a great intake body, we, we put out on social media for volunteers, we've had a tremendous response, and one day, we, we had to stop it. Cause we had way more people than we were gonna, uh, than, than we were gonna need. Uh, both, both healthcare, retired healthcare workers, et cetera, those people that just would fill in what, as we needed. So that was great, the community stepped up and, and, uh, and, uh. We're gonna certainly use as many volunteers as we can as we, as we proceed on, so. Get the ambulance, we can get the ambulance, we went on, uh, Monday, we went to, uh. Lynn, Missouri, picked it up, I had a few things, uh, I think it was, we got there about nine thirty in the morning, it's about a five-minute trip, or we got there about nine thirty in the morning and. Uh, left there about two thirty and down, I had a few things that I had to fix, uh, that we found on our inspection. And that was fixed, and we got it back, uh, that, that evening, so. And now we're just in the process of getting it switched over, radios put in it and licensing for it. And, uh, probably a couple of weeks, it should be on the street.
You should do licensing, you know, and if, if, you know, you take care of licensing, you know, the, the equipment in there.
The State Board of EMS is the licensing agency for it, so they require a, a mechanical inspection, where every year that we have to, they have to do. They did it up there for us before we left, so we have that paperwork to send in, and then we just have to, uh, submit to the state for that, and, uh. Obviously, they wanna check along with that, and then they will, they will give us the license, and then we've gotta get the, uh, truck license as well. According to us, so.
The title was coming.
Okay, so it should be in a couple of weeks, it should be on the street, so. The next one, we're not gonna get another one this year, the, our next one up has got a hundred and, uh, just under a hundred and sixty thousand miles and. And we're gonna run it another year, we typically don't turn around until we get to a hundred and eighty or two hundred thousand miles, so.
That will be a remount, will it be?
It will be a remount, yeah. Yeah, we have two more that'll be remounts, the next two will be remounts, this, this is, you know, was not a remount. Uh, so, uh, the, the whole one is down at the shops, I believe, so.
John, you might describe the, the, uh, disinfecting component on this one.
Yeah, this one does have, since, since it was brought with spark, I mean, it does have some things that they're going to have, the grab rails are antibacterial and all the. Pan holds that you grab onto in the truck, uh, and it does have a UV light, a disinfecting system in the back, so. Uh. We can, uh, when we complete a call, uh, we can, especially if we get into a COVID-related call, we can. Switch up front, the cat that we flip on and it's, and that light comes on in the back, UV light, and it, and it stays on for twenty minutes. And then UV light will disinfect the whole back of the truck then. Uh, obviously, UV light is dangerous to your eyes, uh, so it's set up to, if a door gets open when it's on, the light shuts off. And then you would have to start the cycle again, so, uh, so, yeah, that's part of, uh, uh, the advantage of this truck that, that we've not done in the past. Uh, they've done it for a few years, we've just never taken advantage, and, uh, certainly, uh, with COVID, that made it a little more. Uh, something that we had to look harder at, so. Uh, not that we won't still clean stuff with our wipes, but it certainly adds that extra layer of protection, but, uh, it will kill a lot of things, uh. That could be missed.
And it had different air systems for the back and the front.
It does, it does have good air systems.
Do our new ones, or.
All of them have that separate for the cat. Yeah.
I guess it doesn't work as, as I'm attending booth, if you want to.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't wanna do that. So, that's what I have.
Okay, well, thank you. Any questions, sir?
Uh, when you go to school, you're gonna go to their site?
No, we will go to schools, yes.
I don't even hear them, but, but.
Yeah, and I, we'll travel down to Harrington to do the city, city workers tomorrow, or Monday, rather. Uh, tomorrow, tomorrow's Friday, Friday, we're gonna go to Brown's home. Because they were not included with the rest of the, uh, skill, uh. Oh, so we're gonna go there and we're gonna also be frontier estates tomorrow. Uh, and that's, that's, you know, any, any, uh, older residents in group living is something that gets high on the priority, but, so. Uh, we'll try to get those done as well. And then later on, we'll often adapt anybody sixty-five and older, and, uh, that's when it's gonna be filed up, up to the whole general public. Uh, and, uh, we'll, uh, work through that as well, so. Working well with the, uh, families at Harrington, it's going to provide vaccine as well. Uh, Auburn Pharmacy here is giving vaccinations as well, and the clinic over here in the hospital is providing as well. And then, uh, I'm planning, it's gonna be working through their list of, of sixty-five and older and start. Getting some vaccine and vaccinating their, uh, their customers that are, uh, patients that are, as well. So that will help us out as well, help us get, get vaccines to people quicker and, and, uh, faster, man, so. That's all I got.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay. Take off and go back and see how we're doing.
Well, I haven't seen the ambulances roll out, so we're.
Well, we've been busy this morning, we've had, uh, I've got one speaker right now, one person. I think we've had four or five calls already this morning, so.
Sorry.
You're gonna come back.
Yeah, I don't think I've got one back there. The new one, you have to look at it if you like, over lunch. Welcome to that.
We got one on a COVID patient right now, Tim.
Yep. That's common, buddy, something where we run at least one a day, so.
Well, and I, I don't know that people realize, I mean, I'm, I'm sure many are aware of it, but like, like you just mentioned, you had someone you picked up this morning somewhere, they had to be transferred, or it was transferred from the hospital regardless, at Topeka, so that ambulance is tied up for several hours, actually, or a few hours, and then has to be disinfected and all that, and, and then you may have others out accidents or transfers or.
Right, and, and anytime we, you know, I'm not sure about this case, but we take a lot of COVID patients from here to some other place. You know, even with the, the different air systems, it's, uh, you know, putting our people in the back of a six by eight box on the back of the truck, with a COVID patient, taking them down, you know, a couple hundred miles down the road. Certainly, it's a high risk for our people to, to do that, so. Uh, it's uh, but it's commonplace right now, so.
And fully staffed?
We are fully staffed, I almost hesitate to ever say that. Uh, but yeah, we are fully staffed at this point, so uh, you know, through the whole COVID thing, our staff has done really well. So they, they have to fully gown up, mask up, goggles on, stuff whenever they go into a, a nursing home, or they go into a, a non-COVID house. And it's a lot of work, it gets hot, it's, you know, it's, it's tough to breathe, but that's what it takes, and I've had no complaints, they just do it.
Well, tell them we appreciate it.
They do, certainly not.
I, I know, a lot of times, we do appreciate things, and it goes unsaid, and just assumed, but, but um, we, we do appreciate their efforts, and they're on the front line on a lot of things here, that's, um, they do a great job.
I appreciate it, I will certainly let them know.
I think we'll take a little bit of a break, we have a, a regular meeting starts in uh fifteen minutes, or a little bit more than fifteen minutes, eighteen minutes.
Hello.
Hi, Lynn.
Is Lynn gone?
He's, he's, he's here in the building.
I just had a couple more signatures.
Sure.
You're right under.
Okay.
Yes, I've been downing you for signatures for two months, I think I'm.
You like to be the spam.
I know.
It seems there, I mean, it's a lot more signature card than it ever needs to be.
Oh. Every bank is different, I mean.
We're fine.
Yeah. Good place to have a meeting, so. Who's gonna be here from now on?
I would imagine probably so, since we're getting close to moving.
Uh huh.
We've got a lot better setup here, the microphones are better, I think everyone hears better.
That's nice, I mean, you might as well.
Yeah.
That way you're in the swing of it. So Brad, when do you meet with the construction guys of our new finance? Or have you decided that already?
The district court is moving the first and second of February. And figure it'll take us a couple of weeks to get them up and running, but I would guess we will probably be ready to start moving about the third week of February.
Okay, I have a request. If you think it's gonna go into March, I would like to be moved last, just because we have all the heavy trucks tags.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody coming in, it would be nice if we kept that at the courthouse, and then move after that.
Okay.
That, that would be the best scenario.
My goal would be to have us all out before March first, so.
Well, and I didn't know how that all, so.
I think Sherry is aware of that as well, but, yeah.
Yeah, probably not move us then first.
Yeah.
As soon as we can get out, as soon as they can bring the demo people in.
Yeah.
And start working, so. And that means we can get it, get them in and get the job done, and get back and try to, we try to vacate through all before fair time.
Right.
Honestly, don't know how that's gonna go, that's a, that's a moving target, and I don't even know if it'll be a fairness year again with COVID or not, I'd see, it's not looking positive, but.
My four H is right now.
Yeah.
You know, it's just.
Looking at the count of March first, it's a Monday.
They're not, they're not even doing anything, and that surprises me, because school's back in session, you know, I mean.
Done before, how long it's gonna take to get everybody out, that's it.
Yeah, and I, I'm thinking we're probably gonna utilize that same movement company there.
But I mean, you're talking two to three days.
At least.
Yeah.
I would imagine it'll take us a, a week to move the courthouse.
It's all.
And, you know, if you figure a couple of departments a day, or something like that, so.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Yeah, but yeah.
Hi, Doug.
How we doing?
Good. You wanna get that to Doug?
I don't know, if you take that.
Yeah, yeah.
Doug, I think that one needs to go to probably our insurance company, but we'll get a look at it.
Actually, that's not a whole thing. Probably not, I can't, no, right now. I remember right. Big room.
Well, that's, uh, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's Kate Camp that's gonna represent us on that one, so.
They gotta have it go on.
Yeah.
Good.
Is this a fatality?
No, no, but I think it was an, uh, injury in the vehicle was totaled, so.
I think so too, I, I think you, I've done that.
I think it resulted in a change in the, the other person's career, ability to work and stuff, so. Really on, there was an offer to settle, and apparently it didn't settle, so.
Okay.
But now they've served all three commissioners on that with that, so. I'll send it off to, to Reed it, I think Reed was the one that was taking care of it on there, yeah.
Okay. All right.
I just need a couple of signatures, and then I'll.
I got a dollar piece of my signature, Lynn.
We'll put this, we'll put this on eBay, and. How are you doing?
Good. It's gonna be a nice day out.
Oh, I know.
Wendy, I don't think.
Let's probably just get out of, see the outdoors a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Those two?
Yeah, we are done now.
Great.
I think.
I'm gonna go over to uh Junction City, and gonna meet with the uh director of the Vietnam Veterans out of Topeka, and, and some people there. And everyone, all they go through, and, you know, find remains over at in Vietnam.
Mm-hmm.
And now, you know, they're able, through testing, to figure out who they are, so anyway, there's been a, a few more from Kansas that were, were missing in action.
Oh, wow.
But never, never had made a, an official determination, so they they went, they add some names to the monument over there, and um but, you know, you, you don't think after all these years.
Yeah.
Some of the families that didn't know, you know, for sure.
Hmm.
And uh.
I'm sure technology probably, of course, isn't advanced, but a lot of those families, family members probably didn't outlive technology, and were passed away now.
Yeah, well, and from what I understand, uh, you know, especially in some of the jungles, the growth is so great that they actually go to certain areas where they knew there were things had taken place, or the last area that where a helicopter had gone down, or so on. And i- it's so overgrown that they have to clear things out and go down several feet, you know, think about all the the buildup and, and change of terrain. You know, and you know, it's fifty years. But now.
Now and then, I identify one or two from the second group, second over two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I get some of those, it was the same, same concept, there was one recently from uh one of the islands. And uh, they were able to go down, I have two. Eighteen year old kid.
Doug, how are you?
I'm doing good.
I'm good, good, good. Well, I watched some of the Branson on Eagle.
Oh.
It's a property tax relief.
What did you lock in?
I did, I did, I, that's, that's amazing how that, what your outreach is.
Yeah, we got the one coming up on uh Saturday night, the thirtieth, it's uh, it goes out on the internet.
Hmm.
Overseas everywhere. With, uh, selling sponsorship, where we donated to tons of faith-based organizations, and asked them to uh let their supporters know that they could watch it for free.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, and that they had missionaries overseas to do watch parties.
Hmm.
Last year at this time, that's what we did, and uh, that one had hits all around the world, it was enough that several of the major networks contacted me and wanted to know how we did that.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
We have another one coming out here on January thirtieth, it'll be a one hour, same concept, faith-based organizations are the, uh, getting promos on it.
Hmm. Well, that's uh maybe people staying at home a little bit more too, that's just
Yeah.
good entertainment.
Yeah.
This morning, I, I turned on Ed Sullivan Show, it came on, it's six o'clock reruns, and I was like, oh my goodness.
We don't have flag here, but.
We can get one.
Um, Brad's gonna put a flag up on the screen.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought of that afterwards, I have one of the little ones, I'll bring it next time, and we put it on.
You know, we had that before, where um there'd be an alternate meeting side, or something like that, all of a sudden, people look out, it's like, don't have a flag here, and.
I'll make a note to bring one of those little table.
We had one uh, time, it's one of the first breakfasts that we had, Mayor's Breakfast, and uh and all of a sudden, it's, you know, five fifteen in the morning, you realize you don't have a flag there, you're thinking who you can call. And uh, I happen to think I drove by Emmanuel Church, and the lights were on, and cars in the parking lot. And there's a men's group that met there, and so five thirty in the morning, I the door is unlocked, and went in there, and said, I need to borrow the flag, and and they're like, what? It's like, well. So, and so anyway.
They loan it to you?
They did, they did, so. So Brad, you'll have that on the screen.
Yep.
You give Ron
Yes.
signed materials, so he's got that.
Yeah.
Nothing to add.
He passed up and back to blue and back there, with that one you just gave me.
Yeah, nothing to add, so, nothing to add, the consent agenda. And just the one item on the real estate property. The real property for, on Wendy Bird's property.
Yes, that's the only addition, you've got the other, uh, Chuck is supposed to be here eleven or shortly after to go through the the item that we tabled last week.
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully, we can get that done and take action. He was uh, he's been, as she'll tell you, he's been having difficulty getting the businesses to sign the paperwork, so he ran to Harrington this morning to get the last business.
Oh.
Signature, so that we can get that submitted, so.
I have a procedural question, I guess, since you tabled the CRF grant applications, do you need to make a motion to put that back on the table, or do they just need to make a motion to consider that unfinished business, I mean?
Well, I think when we table it, it, it just indicated that's um
You just kicked the can down.
That it would come up on a future agenda.
Okay.
But I think it's always important that it comes up in the next week or two weeks.
Okay.
So if there is any extension to it, or that's, but it's just coming up now, so we're good.
So you just make the motion like that?
Like normal.
Okay.
I think it remains on the agenda until you actually take formal action to remove it, or
Okay.
or don't take action on it, so, and I don't know that either way is wrong, you know.
Well, I would just read.
Our real order.
Sounds, yes, that's what I think.
So if you wake up, if you can't go to sleep, just pull those rules out, and you know, they're kind of a guideline, but, but, but most groups that meet do not follow those letter, letter of the law, because they're, they're pretty strict, and they're they cover a lot of things we'll never even be involved with, but
Four-H groups, no.
But it's a good guideline.
Land item on the table.
You know, that's one thing I've noticed, in all the groups I've been in, if someone has a four-H background, they know how to conduct the meeting, or they know the things involved in it, pretty much, and did you see that, did you get the paper last night, on the Slicker?
Oh, yes, it was Charlie.
Yeah, I get, and she's been to a few more things, and and um wow, that's, I mean, really, it is. I enjoyed that first article, and I, I can't, for some reason, it sticks out, she had a special brush that she used to kind of make code of it, or the just to show it better, and.
Several generations of expertise developed there.
Oh, yeah, well, I think I think Jeff used to be in the paper quite a bit when he was younger.
Mm-hmm.
Which one was it, Clay Center, teachers up there?
Uh, I'm not sure.
You know, Art?
No.
I don't, he's, it was Manhattan, he got, he went up there for his garden deal, said he got news and stuff, he moves around.
Mm-hmm.
Martin, Martin Manhattan, salaries are, Clay Center has their, under, by the courthouse.
Okay.
Can't be with me right now.
Well, there used to be the lady that brought the rolls, wasn't produced, but, uh, Weeby from Durham. And one time I was over at Junction City, and they had a farmer's market over there, hospital parking lot, and I stopped by, and and uh, and also, you'd see the same people, and, and even over at Slime, um a few years ago, it'd be the same people, but we're over here.
Martin get their cheese and bring it up to the farmer's market now from there, Durham.
Oh, okay.
Well, how's marketing all?
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Glad to have our best.
We've got a minute to go.
Okay, it's got any, you know, no corporation, like started that.
Um, haven't had any update on it, but, but I, I think it is in the works.
He's settled here, Tim.
Hi, Tim.
I didn't know, I, I remember talking about it here, two weeks ago, I guess Chuck will be here, so we can just ask him about it.
Yeah.
Benard.
I'm sorry?
I got a friend of mine, my teacher's class, Benard.
Okay.
He just need a breather.
Yes, we're ready here. Yes, we're ready here. This time I'll call the January 21st, 2021 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. After our virtual meeting last week, we did kind of rearrange things and have a little bit of a better speaker system. So hopefully everybody will be able to hear more clearly and, and that's our intent is to have it where everybody can hear. The first item we have is the approval of the agenda. And there is one addition to the agenda. And that's in regards to a real property tax relief statement. And that's on a property at 905 North Bull, Mulberry in Abilene. And with that addition to the agenda, I'd move that the agenda is approved as amended.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, we have the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the January 14th meeting, also the payroll of $454,830.12. The abatements of $3,201.26. The wider wire payments, which includes utilities of $8,230.07. And credit cards of $22,723.35.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and second for approval of the consent agenda. Any other discussion or comment or question? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Commission comments, Ron, we'll start with you.
I had a little opportunity yesterday to spend some time at the juvenile detention center in Junction City to go with their finances and see how the operation is going. And they're doing quite well, hanging in with the COVID situation. Financially, they're looking good. All employees are healthy and the facility is about two thirds full, so we're pretty happy about it.
Okay, thank you. Craig?
Anybody watch the work session? I did go out and look at the work that the county done, the county road and bridge department done out of 2,500 and trail road. And just got, put some more wrap around that and finish that up. That's all I had, man.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't bring all the comments. I went down, print them off this morning. I think there's probably half a dozen, seven or eight mission comments that we got on there. I gave all the commissioners copies of those plus Brad.
Okay. Thank you. And I do not have anything to report out of the usual, so we'll move on. We do not have any petitions or proclamations. This is the time for public comment. And so at the previous meeting, what we did is someone would go ahead and maybe type in that they wanted to make a comment. And then that way we could recognize you in the particular order. And once again, this is something where it is taped and, and as you know, people are participating virtual. And, and the comments should have to do with the issues. And if there's a spokesperson for a particular group, you know, just identify yourself, but please identify, give your name, your address when you're recognized and we'll hear your comments. And five minutes is the time allotment that we have for comments.
I could type their name and address.
Okay.
In the chat.
So is there is there anyone that would like to make a public comment at this time?
We're waiting on that. I don't know if we mentioned earlier, we'll probably continue to meet up here. Just, I don't
Okay with you guys, so.
Yeah.
I think our facility or the amenities are much better to be able to stream and do everything, so.
Okay. Okay, I do not believe we have any public comments. And so we'll go ahead and
Got one, Paige Westfall.
Okay. Yes, Paige? Were you wanting to make a comment?
Yeah, Paige Westfall, 977 1600 Avenue, Abilene, Kansas. First, I'd like to address the virtual meetings. I understand what you're telling us about needing to do this as there's not enough room for everybody to safely attend in person in the courthouse or in the Dickinson County Health Department. I however, find that reason alone hard to believe. We, an hour before the meeting was decided to become virtual last Wednesday, Lynn had a walk and talk with a person who attends the meetings without a mask. She has a medical exemption and that you guys needed a copy of it on file or she needed to wear a mask. When she refused, he asked her not to come. And when she stated that she would come and that they would have to make her leave, an hour later it became virtual. So I understand the limitations of virtual, but don't think everything was said the, why it went virtual. I also find it hard to believe that there's nowhere large enough when we have a civic center in the depot that has plenty of room for the virtual equipment, mics, et cetera, and for in person to be safely spaced as it was at the Abilene Forward meetings that were held there. Second, after the last meeting, a conversation was overheard between Barb and Brad pertaining to how they loved the virtual meetings because they could just turn people's mics off when they were done, regardless as if they were finished or if they didn't want to hear them. I realize it may get monotonous to hear the same things over and over. However, each of the commissioners are elected by the people of this county and paid for by the taxes paid for by the people of this county. Brad and Barb are also paid by the taxes paid by the people of this county. And I, as a resident and taxpayer of this county, have the right to speak my concerns, whether by email, in person, or with my individual commissioner, or to the board as a whole during a public meeting, virtual or not, and monotonous or not. People tend to repeat themselves when they are either not being heard or the actions they feel need to happen are not being taken. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Paige for your comment. I might clarify, I did have a discussion with someone and my intent was not to tell them, and I don't believe I told them that, but, but maybe they interpreted that way. They certainly can come to a meeting. I, I did have a conversation to say, you know, we're, we're going to have people wearing the mask, that's part of the order. And so, so anyway, that, that, that portion of the conversation did take place. Any other comments or questions that anyone would have?
We've got Lori Armstrong.
Yes, okay, Lori?
Good morning. I was, just wanted to make a comment that earlier Brad Harmon said that the cases remain steady in Dickinson County. I know that you guys probably have access to all this information, but I did send you the Kansas Hospital Association's COVID dashboard that's sitting in your email right now. And I, what I, the reason I sent that to you is because I, I want you guys to have all the facts possible. And it's from a statewide area that does count, the state split into several different districts. And we're the north central district. And the numbers are actually down like 45% over the last 90 days. That's, that's one metric to measure new COVID cases. So I'm not sure where Brad's gathering his information. And then if you look at just the new cases in Dickinson County, we haven't, the most number we've had in the last three weeks is 14 cases. But it is very clearly a downward trend, so I, I hope that you'll take that into consideration. And I'll, I'll continue to forward you guys data. I'm not really sure where he's getting his information that it's remaining steady when across, across the state it's declining. Thank you, sirs.
Hey, thank you.
Chris McKee.
Yes, Chris?
Yes, this is Chris McKee, 1314 Northwest Second here in Abilene. Thank you for this opportunity to attend your meeting. And I really think it was a good move to go virtual, not only for safety's sake, but to keep the temperature down, as I believe the phrase has become. And I really think that keeping the mask mandate in place until there's some agreed upon point met. And at this point, as, as the last person talked about, we don't have a consensus of information or consensus about what goals we need to meet before we can start taking safety precautions away. Again, thanks for being able to attend the meeting. I appreciate it. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission during public comment time? Okay, I don't believe we have anyone else.
We do have somebody on the phone. The person on the phone, did you want to address or?
On caller one.
Yeah. And we've got Gina Dalton there on too.
Uh, yes, we'll go ahead, Gina?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, woo, sorry, I'm, I had another meeting, so I got here late and I'm panicking. I called in and then I didn't see anybody, so then I had to, it's just crazy, crazy, crazy. Okay, um, I would like to know if we had any data that we found on the schools from last week's meeting, if we have that kind of information. And I did just catch the last person that spoke and said, thank you for keeping it on because without the knowledge or whatever, you know, we can't make decisions. Then we better get the knowledge to be able to make the decision whether we need to keep this mandate on or not. If we don't, if we don't, if we don't have those numbers like Lori just presented, that cases are going down across the state, what, what are our numbers? What are our numbers at school? Kids transferring that to teacher or teacher to teacher or student to student? We need to have those figures to make an educated decision. I'm late.
Okay, thank you, Gina. I mean, we certainly do, we have the dashboard that the county puts up. And I know an example of what you sent is what they were doing out at Goodland, I think it was Sherman County. And that actually was information that was presented from their school district and it's on their school district website. But, but we do continually receive information. And then, of course, in our work study session this morning, we had an update from John Holgren from the health department to, to kind of tell us some of the things that were happening and give us information on that. Is there anyone else virtually that would want to go ahead and address the group? So we do have some other things on our agenda. And thank you for those that have called in and also we still have a few items on our agenda, so we'll go ahead and move on. The next item we have is the report from county officers. And so Brad Harmon, at this time, if you can see your report, please.
Okay, a little update on the North Central Kansas County Highway Officials Association meeting for 2021. I spoke to Tom Clausen of Mitchell County earlier this week. Tom is the new president by default because the president, as you're aware, was Karen Rumball in Ottawa County. She did not survive the election. And so Tom became, as the vice president, became the president. He and I talked and given the, the situation across the region, we decided it was, since the meeting would have to be scheduled now for April 1st, it was probably best to postpone that meeting again. And given that, since it's been postponed, this will be the second year. As the two officers, we felt like it was probably in a good place to waive the membership fee for the year. Our treasury is sitting in, in good shape and there's no use to continue to send out invoices for the membership fee to the counties when we're not having that annual meeting. So I doubt that we'll have any objection to that. But I did send out letters, I think yesterday, that went out to all member counties that, as the secretary treasurer, that lets them know that information. So at this point, we won't be having that meeting again this year. So we talked about the work in the work session a little bit at Sterling Hall. We're currently, we're getting some temporary walls put up in the big room and one in the smaller room for courtroom. And to break that out for court services, community corrections and the court, district courts use. And we should have those done. And then our, our staff will go in, our IT staff will go in, start running data cables and phone lines to get us up to where we're ready to go for court to move in there the first of February. So at this point, we have no reason to think that won't take place. We're on track to get that done. As soon as we get that completed, then we will start the same process for the civic center and be moving us into that. As we speak, the civic center is having some wiring done over there, which is another reason why we couldn't use the civic center besides the fact the acoustics are terrible. But we are installing outlets in the floor down both sides of the building so that it would accommodate the county operations. And so we hope to have it done by the first of February as soon as district court is done within the, it'll take probably a week to get them moved and settled. Then the following week, we'll start looking at getting moved over there. And hopefully by the third week of February, we can have moving trucks in and start moving our offices over there from the courthouse. The goal is by the end of February to have all county operations relocated and out of the courthouse and be ready to get, for their contractor, get the demo people in and start working on the renovation, so. We heard a pretty, of course, I give you a pretty extensive brief as well as John Holgren did this morning on vaccinations across the county. I will reiterate that our numbers remain steady contrary to what other hospitals or the region is telling. The numbers I'm reporting are coming directly from our nurses here in this building. Tuesday at a meeting I was at, we had, just that day, we had 17 positives out of about 30 that were done at the hospital that day, which tells me that our numbers are remaining steady. Numbers are down somewhat from what we had anticipated. You heard John say that with the, I think everybody had anticipated after the holidays in the first year, the numbers were going to be up. They haven't been, that's great news. And I'm sure they roller coaster in a lot of areas and you can look at that as a region. We have to look at it as our county because that's what we're affected by. And so they still remain steady at this point. We've had a couple quarantines in the school districts this week. One resulted in a basketball team here in Abilene being quarantined. Luckily, that was from another exposure from another school district person, but you know, the school districts are doing a good job of keeping track of, of their people. And I, I've got to take my hat off to the school nurses. You know, all health professionals are busy, have been for a long time, but I'm telling you, I don't have the school nurses to get things done in a day to be able to monitor their kids, keep track of them, take care of them. You talk about a, a group of people that are understaffed and overworked, and that's them. And so kudos to that, that group of gals across the county for taking care of, of our kids in the school district, so. And to the administration, school staff as well, so. But, and then you do have a letter that came in this morning from St. Andrews School, from their school staff. Each one of you's got a copy that is, explains the importance to the school district, to their school district of the masking mandate and how they feel like it has been responsible for them being able to keep kids in school down there. And I must say, appreciate it. And then it's signed by a dozen or more of their school staff, so. Uh, expressing our appreciation to you for that, so. Uh, that's all I've got until we get to the real property relief application, so.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
We have the pleadings ready to go for the move forward with the tax foreclosure. Uh, before we file down, we want to check the most recent orders from the state to see if there's any reason why we wouldn't be able to file that, because we would be looking at oh, an answer date for some in April, and so we want to make certain that uh that we're able to do that without running into a conflict, that we don't want to put people into a difficult situation, that they that they uh can't get in to pay their taxes, or that they can't get to in for the pleadings and being able to answer those. So I want to compare that with the governor's order, and then we'll see if we can file those pleadings sooner than later. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll go to notices and communications in the mail. We did receive a uh, a large packet, and it includes um the new floodplain maps, and so that's something that we will turn over to staff to, to look at. Um, and that was something that was updated. We also received a uh, a letter in regards to a lawsuit, just giving us the information on that, on regarding an, an accident that had taken place. And so it's just to, the formality of notifying that a action has been commenced in court, and you're refi- required to file a motion to that, so we will turn that over uh, to follow up on. We also had a request from SNAP Safe Night after prom, and as Brad mentioned, we did, and Craig had also mentioned, we did receive uh, some notifications and letters that, that is pretty much just kind of the, the typical type. Um, I'll just kind of mention a few of them. It's from Mita West, and she wants to go on record of supporting the meeting rules, and also is um, is in supportive of the mandate that is in place. We had another one from Kim Townsend asking us uh not to bend to the pressure to lift the mandate. They had one from Don Neville Sac, um, wanting a copy of the packet that was given to us from Dr. Holmes, which he received. Uh, also from Don Neville Sac saying he cannot hear or understand department head meetings, so the people talking, and uh, today, I think we, we have a better microphone system in place, and so that's been very helpful. And then also, as Brad had mentioned, and I had it here uh, earlier, um, this was from whom it may concern. It's from the staff members of St. Andrews Elementary School. Uh, they wanted to share their thoughts and the importance of continuing the mask update. And they said they are one of the few schools in Abilene, Dixon, in Dixon County that have been able to stay open. They said that speaks volumes. It has to do with the mask um, wearing, also that the quarantine may be a hardship for some parents. But, but anyway, they addressed that, and they've had less illness, and general, generally speaking, an overall healthier student body. And then that's signed by several people. I also received a couple of emails and text messages at home. Uh, one was in regards to a Dr. Simon Gold, who had spoke as an authority on it, saying that the masks were not necessary. And I did go ahead and, and Google that, and found out that she had stood in front of a hospital that she was not associated with, and wore a um a, a medical coat that had the name of Sinai Hospital, and Sinai Hospital in LA said that she had done some contract work for three weeks back in 2015, but was not associated. Um, but anyway, uh, can't, K which, K W C H had, had kind of done a background on her and um kind of concluded on their fact-finder, they questioned her reliability, and uh and then I saw she was actually one of the ones that reached the rotunda, and, and, and so since has been charged for entering the, the Capitol Building, or the US Capitol on January 6th. I also have received some emails, you know, from people telling us, you know, please reconsider the quarantine. And is there a way to modify it, and um and I, and then just, I think Lori Armstrong, or Megan, um, had, had sent something, she said to us about the snapshot of North Central Kansas, and I'd gotten that during the work-study session. And I should probably plug your name in with the phone number, because I, I didn't, I wasn't sure who that was from, and um and didn't really get a chance to look at it. So anyway, we've continued to receive comments, and um and so that's all I have. Are there any other communications or notices that any of you have received you'd want to bring up at this time?
You might report that, or Janelle speak about Senate Bill 13. I mean, I think it's important to, to people in our regular session.
Okay.
Let's see what you're doing. Janelle, want to fire the turnspock?
Oh, that's great.
And, and Janelle did give us an update, and also in regards to, we're at the um early part of considering our budget uh that will actually be adopted and take place next summer. So this is the early round on, on that, so you might mention those two things, Janelle.
So the Senate Taxation Committee passed a Senate Bill 13, and that's a new notification and, and public hearing requirement for taxing entities. It's called revenue neutral rate, and basically what that's going to mean is that the tax dollars that we have allocated for 2021 would be the same for 2022, so we'll have to work within our budget. It also requires additional work by our county clerk's office. If the commission or council of any taxing entity, with the exception of schools in the county, wishes to increase their tax rate above those dollars, the county clerk would have to notify all of the taxpayers with at least seven different notifications within that, or seven different um regulations within, within the notification that's, that's sent out. So, and it also changes the timeline for budgets, and then increases um increases knowing the time that we have to work with that, but it shortens the length of time that the county clerk has to certify back to the state. So it's something that we'll be watching. The House Taxation Committee will take that up next week on the 26th. And we'll, we'll just continue to monitor that. It will affect our budget for next year, because I'm anticipating increases in expenses. So it's something that will work with our department managers and, and elected officials, and I will say they've done an excellent job over the years in, in managing their budgets and, and keeping them flat, but we'll restart that process then, so.
Thank you.
And when I was on the Kansas Association County Board, that was something too, that we had been working the KAC along with the League of Kansas municipalities uh, to try to craft something along that line. And, and previous to that, and, and you know, currently, there still is the procedure that as the budget is developed, that there's the official publication that takes place in the newspaper, plus there's the public hearing to make everybody a- aware, and um, and she's trying uh, I visited with Senator Tyson, not this year, but um, but the year before, and she's the one that's brought that forth. And of course, it did pass the Senate. It's going on to the House side now. And um, a- as Janelle mentioned, um, it is something helpful to encourage everybody to keep taxes and property tax in check, and a budget in check. And yet, the downside of it is if there is an increase, there's a notification of a mailing that has to go out to everyone. So it's, it's building in some extra cost. Um, and, and that may be something that, that some people would overlook or not consider on the early part of the service, uh, of that particular bill. So um, the, the other thing that I would mention, and we discussed this, uh, and was brought out in the work-study session. You know, just for example, and I'll use the example that the commissioners usually would attend informational meetings, sometimes in Topeka or Wichita. Um, you know, now that things are going virtual, there may not be the necessity to make some of those travels. And, you know, there's a few items in the budget or so that I, I think we can pare back. And we're certainly going to encourage all department heads and elected officials, you know, try to watch that budget, keep it as close as you can. And having said that, just on a county level, just like it is on your individual level, there are certain things that, that increase, and for example, you have gasoline. And you look at what the pump is now compared to thirty days ago. Um, we also use fuel, just like, like everybody else does. And um, so there are some items that, you know, can trend and project upward, and um we do the best we can on all of that, and really, even though we adopt the budget on an the budgeting process and looking for ways to be efficient, take place every day. And that is important. Any other comments? We do not have any resolutions to consider. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a CRF grant application from local businesses, and this was something that was tabled previously, just so we could get, uh, there's more information to be gathered, and this has to be something very accurate that we do turn in. So Brad, would you want to give us additional information on that, please?
Sure, this is a grant application that we applied for back when the Corona relief funds became available from the community development block grant program at State of Kansas. We were awarded, much like the city and a number of other agencies, with $130,000 in that grant that is different from the other uh CRF funds we've got, the Spark Funds, and this is to go to local businesses. And so we uh engaged the help of the Economic Development Corporation with Chuck and, and his staff, and they utilized the uh Planning Commission, or Central Regional Planning Commission to uh do the administrative portion of that grant program. And since then, I think they've got a, a few businesses that have met the criteria, and with that, I'll turn it over to Chuck, who's here to go through that information, so.
Okay, yes, Chuck?
Yeah, we had um eleven businesses that had applied uh with a complete application. Uh, that were reviewed. Of those, there were six that were determined to be eligible. Uh, I will give you those uh names in just a minute. Uh, we worked with the, those businesses, uh, on what their expected expenditures were beginning on March 1 of 2020 through the end of the year. Uh, we've still got a couple of months left to compile uh, all the individual invoices, making sure that all those have been paid, uh, so we're in the proof of um, expense side with each of these businesses. Um, but ever to date, we're going to recommend to you, uh, the individual businesses and the total amount that we think they could be eligible for. Uh, so Abilene Physical Therapy and Sports Rehab out of Chapman uh, was determined to be eligible. Uh, they showed a need of, uh, up to $30,000 in funding Flowers by Vicki, which is a Harrington business. Uh, $25,000, uh, Kansas Coffee and Ice Cream out of Chapman showed a need of $7,000, Phyllis's Flowers and More, which is also a Chapman business, showed a need of $25,000. Tavern Boutique and Tannion, Chapman showed a need of $3,000. And then the Spot in Dining Car, which is a restaurant down in Harrington, uh, showed a need of $30,000. Uh, we will tell you, we've confirmed expenses uh to date, and I'm going to present you uh with a request for payment. Um, of those today, uh, Abilene Physical Therapy has submitted proof of receipts for their $30,000, so they are showing a full expenditure of those grant funds today. Flowers by Vicki has submitted uh acceptable or eligible expenses of their $25,000. Uh, Phyllis's Flowers and More has provided uh proof of receipts for $44,278.39. The Spot Dining Car has shown eligible expenses of $30,000, so that's a, a total of the 120 that we can uh submit uh or award out to each of these individual businesses, or toll to these businesses. Um, from that 120, we've now got a request for payment of $97,278.39. So we have proof of, uh, we've got documents for you to sign, uh, that are all required for the CDVG program that we can do at a time that you see.
And just for informational purposes, and I'll let you answer this, and um I, I know the answer, and I know you do too, but, but there's no Abilene businesses on this particular application. And so you might explain why it's a countywide initiative, but it is outside of the Abilene area.
Yeah, through the CDVG program, you cannot have a duplication of, of eligibility um in an area, so uh, while we wrote it on the county-wide basis, because the city of Abilene had applied for their own, we had to exclude all Abilene businesses.
And, and Abilene businesses did have opportunity through the Abilene grant
That's correct.
For, for their application, so that was covered previously, and I think uh Jane Foltz and Julie Roller Weeks were the ones that facilitated that.
That's correct. So yes, all county businesses were eligible. Uh, it was put out there. Abilene, if you were in the Abilene area, you had to apply through their program. Uh, the rest of the county businesses could have applied through our group.
Okay. Are there any questions?
This one is left. Is it, if the program's not worked out, might it go back into the state? Chuck?
Uh, that's correct. If we do not get proof of eligible eligible expenses, then any remaining, go back to state.
Timeline on that?
Uh, they got through, uh, I want to say July 1 to prove eligible expenses.
Okay, thank you. If there's no questions, we do need to have a motion to approve this grant and submit the paperwork for it.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant.
We have the motion. We have the second for approval of the CRF grant application for businesses here in Dickinson County.
And you would be approving the $97,270?
Yes, thank you.
With a distribution.
For that distribution, yes. Thank you.
Yes, 97,278.38.
There you go.
97,278.38. So we have that motion and a second, and that is the amount that we're talking about. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
The only thing I would add, Lynn, would be that with this approval, then we will I believe, turn around and cut checks to them next week. Is that correct? So for the businesses that are, it curious how long it will take to get their money. Our normal accounts payable run would be next week, so we should be able to get them in for next week.
Okay, great.
Now, not on that. That will be through the Dix County Health Corporation will present that.
That's through us.
But I mean, yeah, but sure. The bill will present it from you to Dixon County.
Uh, that's what you've got.
That's, we use the documents, the documents to, to pay off.
We're paying, we're, we're signing.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item we have was added to the agenda. This has to do with the real property tax relief. And Brad, if you would give us a summary of that property on 905 North Mulberry.
Yes, this is an application that we received from Wendy Burt. Uh, it is regarding a residential fire that happened in 905, or 905 North Mulberry in 2000, December 2018. Uh, the house was damaged substantially from a house fire under the Kansas statute, uh, that makes that resident eligible for some relief of their property taxes in the following year. Uh, and so this is their application. It does meet the criteria, and, and we would recommend that you uh approve that for them to uh, get an abatement of property taxes for the uh, 2019 tax year.
The amount, I'm betting on what it is, Brad?
I do not know what the, the amount is, no. I could look it up, but I
I still move it.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? So we have the uh real property tax relief, 905 North Mulberry. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We do not have any other business, uh, unless there's something that anyone would want to bring up. to bring up. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.